Given that a regular meeting of the town of Gooden East Texas will be held Tuesday, the eighteenth day of October twenty twenty three in the town of Gooden East City Hall. The Gooden East Texas seventy five seventy eight, the student states of government code, section five five one point one two seven. One or more members of the town council may attend this state via video conference. If we perform the town council to be visiting present at the above meeting location, the following items will be discussed. All the words at six P M. Implication and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for all the many blessings that you bestow upon all of us and all of our guests, citizens of our community. Or we ask you to be with those who need you the most, Lord, those who are hurting and suffering, or those who serve others. Your Son's standing right in it.
Mayor, Dr. Romero messaged earlier that he had gotten tested positive for COVID, so he was not my speaker.
Make him look, excuse Dr. Romero for the night. Must be by Mayor Carter's second by council member, Mr. Bryant, to excuse Dr. Romero.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Daco Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Open forum at this time of year is allowed three minutes for person to address the accountable on any thought. There'll be no discussion or formal action taken during this agenda item. Speaker must identify themselves before speaking. The speaker request for him must be presented to the city secretary prior to the meeting. We have three. First off is that gave us. He can say it's.
Yes. I'm the last. My name wasn't called last week.
I can't turn on the list.
Oh, I didn't sign on the first one of this.
The third one I got. You're okay. For a stage. We don't buy. It's okay. We're all, we're all your neighbors.
Thank you. I'm a family decision in Jersey, Jersey.
You can take your job.
I was for forty years on the. I started practicing in nineteen seventy seven. I'm a graduate from University of Kansas Medical School and residency and. To be a son of a mother who's shot in. Excermo grand thing program for five years to try and see how it would. Private here, you know, and essentially to give those who are in such the environment, you know, working. Those for five years, they plan on it. It's standing. But a lot of them further. Later upon, a lot of other programs that sent a time plan, they might find their plans. The third goal. So ours was to expand primary care, but. Later models. Were trying to get referrals to statues without their roots. So the initial thought was that very come here and find here for our people and to. Get a home base for them to get into the country and stuff like that. When that happens. Especially those patients. They don't send people back. So therefore the number counts problems on the primary care, like the special that they're populated group. So when that happens and it's a self-defeating. Purpose. The initial rural money is only generated referrals to party on this network that you survive. Something about that makes a lot of sense. They make a lot more money than a primary care doctor does. And remember the body of money that you make encounter. Money generated. So. Isn't stress at the beginning, but it is later on and. And I don't know if you have an account and accounting access to your numbers and things like that, but you would see that in patient. With referrals. Federal law, but it prohibits profit centers. But you can't get money back growing, sending people out on X-ray or a special referral. So none of that comes back as a credit. The rural clinic, which we are considered rural funding. It was for me to kind of date this, it's sort of a line where first it's been in the trenches. There was no way for, this was sort of like a pre-dozen. Happening, so it's gonna happen because.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You did a great job, I'd like. Mr. Donald Hayden.
You don't mind, I'm gonna pop over here and.
Thank you.
My name is John. My wife Susan. The owner's taxpayers. We live at seventeen. I've got some tough issues that I'd like to address. With you, the city, the city council. And let me, let me begin where I'm going to end, which is when I am, I'm going to suggest a fix for the problems that I'd like to talk about. On Monday, October second. Over the S B I A O A meeting. We turned out the largest community crowd that it ever showed up. There were over ninety citizens in that room that day, standing room only. And that in the middle were torrential down. Why did they come? Well, the answer really is pretty simple. And that is because these people, these citizens, our friends, our neighbors. Were concerned and they were frustrated. We were able to make that turnout that day with a five-day notice. And many of them, many of us had heard rumors of the closure of U T R G being held. I tried six times to try to connect and ask for a little one-on-one time. Our city manager and it's only acted six times, but I actually got a call. We now know that despite repeated efforts with U T R G and its administration. At the clinics slated for closure on December one. To say that the clinic issue was mishandled at the city level would be a gratuitous assessment. Utterly inept is a better description. We've got a folder that's coming out that has takeaway information that I'm suggesting at your leisure, you have a chance to look at. I'm, I'm gonna summarize what's in this folder. By the way, there's a folder for everybody. Had we had this community known about the closure of this clinic. The situation that we're talking about tonight never would have happened. Had the community been provided with early notice and a heads up and an opportunity for involvement, none of us would be in the room to know. And the only thing we'd be saying is thank you and thank you for helping us keep. Excuse me, I thought I got three minutes. That was three minutes. Thank you so much. Next we have, I'll share the additional information with each of you. For those of you up at the city council desk, be on your desk tomorrow morning.
Nancy. Yeah. I'll be brief. I went to Harlingen to get my blood drawn today. I had an appointment here at U T C. Three months in advance at eight fifteen, which would then much more convenient to my residents if I need to. But that's all right. I drove to Harlingen. They're very busy there at U T C office. There's only one phlebotomist, so I waited about forty minutes to get my blood drawn. And she was like very flustered and I said, oh, you look like you're really busy. And she goes, yes. And I said, and now, she goes, you're Laguna Vista, right? I go, yeah. So she pulled up my record right away online because they keep meticulous records at U T C. And I said, yes. And I, I'm supposed to have a lipid panel and I'm a patient of Dr. Mangisaw. And he's an excellent doctor and he's the one that recommended that I do this because my mother had strokes and my baby's susceptible to it at my age. So anyway, by the end of the conversation, you know, I said, well, I'm sorry that we've added to your workload. We're troubled by the recent state events as well. And she said basically, she was like, when I went in there, she goes, I don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on with all these, you know, all these people from Laguna Vista. And I said, well, frankly, neither do we, but we gotta move forward, right? And I smiled and I said, I hope you have a good day. And she was relaxed and she said, yeah, you're right. You gotta move forward. So that's what I'm here for, to let you know that I'm disappointed. And also I have a question about this E M S. On the cost savings, it's supposed to be a cost savings, but I had wonderful response from the Laguna Vista fire department. And the police department, when my husband refers to we weren't here, he started bleeding from his nose and his eyes. And the police department was there within five minutes, the ambulance within ten. And it was like twenty dollars for our community to pay for that. And we let all of our volunteers go. For what is the service that you, that you've already funded? But we can't fund the U T C clinic. What is the cost savings in that when we were getting the volunteers and wonderful service before? Why, why did we replace that? Thank you.
New business discussion consideration possible action. Item one, miss consideration possible action to approve the other minutes September twelve, twenty twenty three. Comments, where to, correction.
I approve to, I, I, I need to approve the minutes September twelve, twenty twenty three, city council.
Motion made by council member Tolan, second by council member Zanbolas to approve the Ms. September twelve, twenty twenty three meeting.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Daco Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yeah.
Item two, financial reports, review of monthly financial reports.
So in front of you, you'll have our local financial packet. You'll have the reconciliation of our general fund. You will have the general revenue fund statement and revenues of expenditure. And then the balance sheets for all of our funds and the check register. So if you have any questions.
We would have any questions? I like keeping my point out to the.
So obviously this is year in, so we will start our books as of yesterday. The audit will be starting. As of right now, so that we get our child balance. As of October first. We are basically starting our new fiscal year. We ended the year above on all of our revenue except. Be building permits, so that one was down, but we made up for that in. In the other category, so we ended the year on a very positive note, spending under our expenses and over on for our revenue tax. So yeah, we should see an increase in our general fund over the end of next month.
Very good. Good job, you guys. Item three, U T G V medical clinic discussion and the status of U T R G V clinic. Need you ready?
Me and him. I'm scared.
I'll start. As we all know, U T R G V closed their door December first. It was a great partnership for the last five years. I went to the meeting last week that everybody at the H O A room did off. It was a good, it was a good turnout. It was a lot of good information and people's concerns and. They got all the heart. I also talked extensively with U T R G V administration. About the reasons why they're closing the clinic and what we could do to save the money. And they said that they lost two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars last year. And that. It was unattainable to keep it open. They didn't disclose ours. They closed two others. Somebody else in conference at U T R G V told me that when they went to go to the budget process, because Texas on a biannual budgeting process is the budget year. That they told them that they cannot run. Profit centers in the negative. And they were told by their bosses that to close them down. So. That's where we stand. I'm moving forward. I hope that we can get somebody in here. Work together as a team and everybody else. Get somebody else over here so we can have a primary card for this. Can you hear anything?
I just wanted to mention as well to your comment earlier that we didn't know either. We were as surprised as everybody else that this clinic would close. I'm a patient, I was a patient with that clinic for the entire five years or longer. Whoever was there, I went over there because I like to support our local businesses, so. We were as surprised as you are. Looking back, it didn't come to surprise to me because when I went there, there were no patients in there. We struggled, we tried to talk to them that they will accept walk-ins. They always said we will accept walk-ins. You call up and they said, oh, no, there is no doctor here. You cannot come in. So there were a lot of points where if this would have been a private company, they would have been done after. And the city supported them financially. We have the hardest time receiving data from them, knowing how many new patients. City, Wendy needed to tell them, listen, you need to advertise. People do not know that we have you guys here. This is a wonderful service. Why don't you come to one of the festivals, make a tent, we'll give it to you, just come, somebody come here to tell people. It took, you have to drag them in. This is not how business should be. And I'm very, very disappointed in how this all went down.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna wait for the council all the, all this.
Okay.
That was my one, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Do you entertain a comment from the audience? Okay, it is quick. If you would please open your folder.
We're not gonna entertain that.
All right, when you have the moment, when you have the chance, there is a timeline within this folder. I'm not asking until I said later, okay? Anyway, there is a timeline and the timeline is built on documents and statements. Directly from the members of the C D C. Committee and from the city as well. I think, and from U T R G B. I think when you pick a moment. To read that timeline in contrast to what you were saying about the business. I think you will find that the gaps will be filled in what you have said. Thank you for the time.
Like I said, there's no reason to rehash what happened, in my opinion. We have to move forwards because it is what it is. Not coming back. They, they told me. From Michael patriarchy that they needed a complete fact stop. And what that, and I asked them, what, where's the complete fact stop in system? That I think that we cover every single loss that they might have in the future. And I think that is then putting us in the business of having a. Running a clinic, which we're not in the business of. So like I said, I hope that we can get a business to come in here or run a clinic. And. And that's what, this is what we all look like and. And. If, if U T R G V. Had done such a great job. Then they would have been this. If they would, if they would have given a good product. Then the people would have shown up to go there and they didn't show up. And that's, that's the thanks. So. Anybody else? No? Okay. Moving on, item four, do it by the bay. Consideration possible action to approve the hosting of the six annual do it by the bay on Sunday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
So we've been approached. Like in, just like the, just I am said that the two, the, if we would host the six annual do it by the bay on Sunday, January twenty eighth. Just needs council's approval, if the calendar is clear and. If you have any questions or familiar, look up the answer.
So I, I moved you a bit.
Motion made by council member Tolan, seconded by council member Bryant to approve the do it by the bay.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Daco Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item six, holiday incentive program, discussion consideration possible action to initiate the hot holiday incentive program. Oh, I'm just, I'm considering some possible action. Resolute twenty twenty three, oh, twenty four, denying Texas gas service company's statement of intent to increase rates. Mayor, mayor council members, it's, it's that time of year again, the term that handles this matter for us that. Are you the rate researcher that is recommending that it be challenged until they're back in the number cities to that sort of deny the rate question? What happened after that is we'll go to a hearing where the, the, the commission. Take a decision on rates. But this is the. Resolution that we would draft every year. So I'm recommending for the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution twenty point thirty five zero two forty nine, Texas gas service. Statement of intent to increase rates.
I'll second.
Motion made by council member Zanbolas, again by council member Daco Vale to approve resolution twenty twenty three.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Daco Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item six, holiday incentive program. Discussion consideration possible action to initiate the hot holiday incentive program, Randy.
So last meeting I came to you guys, we are trying to increase the market into for our short-term rentals, our heads and beds to bring more. People to Laguna Vista for short-term stays. And so one of the ways we can do that is by increasing advertising and using the hotel occupancy funds to purchase items for promotional. For that, for that venture. So I come to you guys last meeting with the idea of a. Upgrade, upgrading our Christmas decorations for the town and kind of coupling it with a short-term rental. Promotion that if they come stay through the month of, you know, December one through December thirtieth, they potentially get a discount. It would be up to the short-term rental owners to give a discount, but it would be an, an offer out there. But it would be helping to help with curb appeal, marketing and being able to advertise for people to. Just so we can start trying to bring more heads and beds to, to Laguna Vista. So I came with some quotes for, for decorations. It's in your packet. Some of it's just adding to what we already have. We purchased a Christmas tree a few years back. From that same company, we can get the industrial, I'm sorry, commercial ornaments that go with the tree that come with the tree pattern. And so it'll be a professional looking tree decoration. We've had, you know, pumps of past year that the wind blown off the decorations, but. We can get that package along with a, a tree topper. So the tree would look, you know, complete. And then some new decorations for the entrance at five ten and one hundred. You guys have already approved the furniture. This was just giving you guys more details on what. What the expense would be on, so.
Yes, sir.
Just a question relative to the clinic. Does the city have a plan or you intend to develop a plan to attract the clinic or just hope one shows up?
We actually have a plan going on at the time. We're really working diligently. So all of us actually behind the scenes do to bring someone, to bring anybody. Okay.
When we be ready to share this?
When we have, when, when, when we have a, an actual somebody that will come talk to us. So like right now, we are. We've talked with people. We have people that are, it's a no-go, like not even close. They wouldn't come here for anything. And we have a couple that are thinking about talking to us.
Yes. Other questions here, where you gonna address the E M P first responders?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I just.
Go ahead.
So in the last meeting, we discussed maybe some Laguna Vista type of decorations. How did that work out? It's probably difficult, I'm sure.
So there's two, there's two issues with it. One is timing for this year, right? Because that would be a special name, you know. Right. Type item for next year. So it's something that I will need to, to continue working on and potentially purchase for the next year. Wrong with Christmas trees and, I mean, Christmas lights and decorations, you know, when you're doing stuff and lights, once they light up, I mean, they. It might look like one thing during the day and then you light up and it's still just gonna look like a cat, like they're not gonna know what it was. We looked a lot for different things that would kind of scream Laguna Vista and, and anything that was just already made that would be hand. Not handy, but easily accessible for this year. It would just look like a, you know, a fish and when you wouldn't look like anything. Yeah, the flamingos on the island, very generic. There were not, there was nothing. So we could, what we're gonna have to do is look at getting something more special made or created. There's a couple of different ideas that they have some of those tapestry letters, the big letters, you know, for that, that town site to have for the like photo ops. And we can get the word Mary, we can get the, you know, L B, we could do a couple of different, those things that would make it, you know, different and stand out that, that the rest of the cities are doing. So they have, you know, some of those ideas, but again, those are more personalized to the town. So it's. Timing wise, those are kind of works. So, so we looked into it. We just can't. We'd be a better bet for better luck for next year. No, no, it was just what you like, wanted more information about the, about what we were doing or what I was doing about the, the programs.
Item seven, negative session. Take the closed session in accordance with the open meetings act as authorized by the Texas government code regarding any manner lists on the agenda of improvement second five five one point zero seven one. Compete with the town attorney five five one point three seven two deliberation regarding real property. Five five one on the court. Liberation for your personal matters and five five one point. five five one point four, liberation regarding personal matters, and five five one point zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Make a motion regarding that.
Awesome.
Much appreciated. Much appreciated. Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilmember Howard. We go to the second.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Daco Vale?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we return from executive session in six forty. So I need to do consult with the council and our attorney regarding issue regarding the clinic. But then we are in, we are in talks right now. And they, they don't have, you feel who they are. They're, they're gonna come take a tour of our facilities this week. You know, there's no guarantee until the bottom line sign. But at least we are getting closer. And we plan on putting together a committee on if this doesn't work out, then, you know, getting the committee together to attract economic development in, for a clinic. So that's, that's the goal.
I just wanted to say that I'm very disappointed that our residents don't really think this is important. And only because we went to executive session, everybody left. And here we are again, the same thing I'm seeing for years and years. You cannot complain if you don't show up. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
No, okay. Only mandatory report.
All right, guys. So the first we're pretty much where we're at with the grants. The only update that we have is we have actually received the contract for the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar contract for the two thousand nineteen floods and tropical storm Melba. So Grant Works is reviewing that and Mr. Osuna. So that one is for, just in case, for anyone that's here that doesn't remember, this is for the drainage improvements along Palm Boulevard, Orange Lane, Ebony, and Mesquite, all between Taylor and Hibiscus. And so this is that almost million dollar grant that we got awarded back in, I believe, March. So this is, the contracts coming in. Once the contract gets signed and approved by them and our council, then it'll go into the next phase of procurement. So we're just plugging along, you know, hurry up and wait. But so we're at that next step of the grant. We are still in the waiting game for the Texas Park and Wildlife Grant for Roll Off Park, ones I hear. But we don't plan on, we don't, Ms. Alexander doesn't expect to hear anything from that till later part of fall, fall, early, early winter. But so we're still in the middle of it. Um, so I wanted to just give a quick update. The, we have finally gotten a company that can help with the website. That's not going to force me to take it off of GoDaddy. I've interviewed about four or five IT guys locally. And most, well, not most of them, all of them want to take our website away from GoDaddy and put it on their own system, which is how we kind of got hijacked with the first website in and of itself. So I finally found a company out of Fort Worth that will do it within the parameters of staying on GoDaddy, so we can have that safety of still controlling our website if, you know, they decide to go under or whatever. The website updates will have an interactive page. The primary focus is, is obviously cleaning it up. There's a lot of work that, it's better than it was, but it needs a lot more work. So cleaning it up in general, and then getting the pages to be more interactive. So when you want to go for a term rental, they'll have all the rentals on the page when you go to that, you know, the link hopefully to like their Airbnb or whatever that rental property wants to give me for their link. Anybody that's registered with Laguna Vista, so we can do more advertising, such as that, add some interactive pages to the Laguna Vista walking trails. Since we've gotten all those plants donated, we're gonna get pictures and QR codes out there, so you can scan the QR code and maybe take it to the plant that's there. And we're gonna work with some of the local birders and try to get, you know, if you're, you know, the signs you see at parks, you know, you might see this animal and, and maybe get a bit more. And then that'll kind of interact with our website, because that's basically our, our, our open door. When people look at Laguna Vista, that's the first place they're gonna go is our website. In addition to having all of the ordinances and things like that. So that's where we're at on the website and marketing aspect of, of things. So that should be about a seven-week turnaround. So hopefully by December first, we should have a new and improved, again, website to, to roll out for you guys. So the strikes, we have been dealing with the strikes complaints for many, many, many moons. Again, another business that I not really should be involved in, but others citizens call and complain about it. So I have, as of the week of September twenty-third, I talked to the regional manager, who's again, and who's very, very nice, and he's dealt with me. And they have changed up some of the member, members of management of the, over there. And I, so hopefully we'll see improvement in, you know, sanitation and the gas pumps not having birds whoop on them constantly. And bees, you know, flooding your car when you do that. So, you know, I tell them, we have beautiful stripes all around us. This one, I, I don't know. So, but he's been very kind. And so hopefully we'll start to see some turnarounds and we'll stop getting calls from our citizens about, about strikes. So the town siren, I'm still kind of doing a work in progress, seeing what we can do. So there's no new information on that. Sunset Breeze subdivision, there's nothing that they're waiting on in the city right now. It's all on their end. They're still waiting for a couple of things from TechStop to get approved. And so there's nothing on our end with that. Just wanted to give you guys a couple of upcoming events. We have a fall festival on October twenty-seventh at six o'clock. Then we'll have our Veterans Day ceremony November eleven. And then we have the, the Christmas event on December eighth. So those are the, the next three town events. And I believe, unless you guys have any other questions about what's in the overall generic of the, of the team manager report, that's all I have.
I'd like to say thank you, Randy, for following through with those lights. We had a complaint from a citizen on Old Townside, those streetlights on Hibiscus and I want to say Ebony were all out. And they're in the dark for a while. And so I told the manager and she got it done. So I know it's a process. It's not like we have the light switch somewhere over here. To get the light, right?
Fine, fine.
But, you know.
Good old AEP.
Good old AEP. So, right, the citizen called me back and said, thank you very much, or?
Yeah, welcome.
Anybody else? Move to adjourn.
So.
Most of the events, the district told and seconded by to be, to be, to be. Brian.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Daco Vale?
Yeah.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I may have contributed to the animal project, right? The other day I was there and a lot of bad, good relationships.
And you don't want?
No, I brought a pain, I brought a pain and landed on my rear rear mirror. So I rolled down the window to see.